I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 29th County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. If you need a listening device, Robert is here and can set you up with that.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And I'd like to take this opportunity for a point of personal privilege. I'd like to introduce or recognize that last Thursday night Pam TD, the Senior Trial Attorney for the State's Attorney's Office, received the MB Tribute to Women Award in the category of law and government. Pam, you want to just stand if you would? This is one of the top recognitions of local leadership in the Sioux Falls area and we are thrilled that Pam has been recognized in this way. Pam began her career in the State's Attorney's Office in 1977 and has been recognized many times for her contributions to the practice of law in this community. And this is another well-deserved recognition for which we want to congratulate Pam. So, thank you very much Pam. Did you want to say anything Pam? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. Okay.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of 4/22/14 and the joint meeting minutes of 4/22/14.
Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Move for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second on the minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or additions to the minutes? And those are two different meetings. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And B is to consider a motion to correct the commission minutes from April 15th, 2014, by including the resolution MC 14-15, which was approved during the meeting but was not included in the text of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to correct the minutes from April 15th. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $649,928.23.
Move the bills. Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any questions or comments?
Chairman Chair.
Commissioner.
This week's bills include substantial payments to all of our fire departments in the county, you know, Dell Rapids, Hartford, et cetera, ranging from $6,000 to $30,000. So that's increased our bills by about $200,000.
I have a motion and a second to pay their bills. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
A motion for routine action.
I'll move routine action. Second.
I have a motion and a second for routine action. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And item B is a briefing on the 2014 Minnehaha County Affirmative Action Plan.
Good morning Jen.
Jenny Addicks.
Good morning Commissioners, Jen Addicks from Human Resources. This morning I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the 2014 Affirmative Action Plan. I'm not going to go into a lot of depth this morning as you've already been provided with a copy of the full report. Additionally, in March, the Minnehaha County Diversity Committee met to review the plan. We went over the entire plan in great detail. And additionally, the all department heads have had the opportunity to review the plan as well. There's also a paper copy available in the commission office. As you know, every year, Minnehaha County is required to buy the Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs to provide and prepare two different affirmative action plans, one for minorities and females and the other for veterans and individuals with disabilities. And these plans take an in-depth look at the county policies and programs as they're relating to affirmative action within the county. And a comprehensive data analysis is performed so we get both a big picture view as well as a specific examination of all of our recruitment and hiring practices. And then finally, our plans detail what our action plans are to ensure continued affirmative action throughout all of our hiring and recruitment practices. County demographic information is gathered and it's compared against the Sioux Falls metropolitan statistical area or essentially what our local workforce availability is. And then this comparison provides us with the opportunity to identify if there are any trends or patterns that might indicate potential discriminatory impact in any of our practices. One change to this year's plan is that we were able to use updated data for our metropolitan statistical area from the 2010 Census Bureau. So, we were anticipating some pretty big changes but actually our position stayed relatively the same. The county certainly strives to have a one-to-one ratio of availability to workforce, but the OFCCP recognizes that statistically unlikely. So, they give us the option of comparing 80% of availability. So, that's what we're going to look at in the next couple of charts although our end goal, of course, would be a one-to-one ratio. The first chart takes a look at the minority employees against workforce availability. Employees are categorized into one of seven different job groups and then compared that way. And if we don't have a one-to-one ratio, then we say a goal needs to be established. In this chart, we do miss a one-to-one ratio for minority employees in three different job categories, officials, skilled craft, and technicians. However, all of these job groups are relatively small. They have 31 or fewer employees. And in each case, if we were to hire only one minority employee, we would meet, we would satisfy our goal. The next chart compared is the same type of chart, it just compares females to workforce availability. Again, we miss our goal in three areas. In one of those areas, skilled craft, if we were to hire only one female, we would meet our underutilization goal. In the remaining two areas though, service maintenance and technicians, we are slightly underutilized, so we do need to set a goal in those areas. For all of our job groups, recruitment, hiring, and termination practices have been analyzed and there's little concern of discrimination in our practices. However, we do remain committed to affirmative action and will therefore continue to work toward meeting our goals. We can take kind of a big picture view of the minority workforce as well. The lighter green column represents the Minnehaha County employees whereas the darker green represents the workforce availability. So you can see in most areas, we are at or above workforce. Other than in our last two columns, we are maybe slightly below what's available to us in the workforce. The final plan that we prepare is for veterans and individuals with disabilities. And this plan currently does not focus on specific data like the other plan does. So it's just really an overall plan that shows our commitment to affirmative action in these areas. We do include our Vets 100 report. This is a breakdown of where our veterans are in the different job categories. Currently, we have 25 employees who met one of the protected veteran status. That number to me seems low, but I think that's because this report only identifies those veterans in protected categories. It doesn't include all veterans. Also, it doesn't include any active or reserve military members. And certainly, we have a significant number of employees in those groups. Lastly, for our plan, we identify our ongoing goals and objectives. And I'm not going to go through all these points again. I know you have the full plan available to you. This isn't something that we just address once a year. This is something that we are committed to throughout the year. Each time we open a new job posting, we're taking a look at these things. We're making sure that our advertisements are going out to different agencies in the area that support affirmative action. Next year, we will see a change in our plan. The Department of Labor has released some new final rules so that the data that we currently collect for minorities and females will be also required for us for veterans and individuals with disabilities. So, we have to be in compliance by January of 2015. We'll start hopefully gradually implementing this toward the end of the year, toward the later part of this year rather, so that we are up and ready by January 1st, 2015. So I think that will be one of our major changes for next year. Again, I want to thank the Diversity Committee for all their time. We spent over an hour, I think, probably close to two hours reviewing this plan in March in our meeting. And again, this morning's just review of the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I will ask for formal approval of this plan at next week's meeting.
So this was just a briefing question.
How does this year's result compare with other years' results?
Sure. You know, like I said earlier, we were expecting to see some more significant changes, especially since we're using new data for our available workforce this year. But we stayed relatively the same. On both of those charts that you have in your full plan, we compared this year workforce availability with the 80% rule and then what the 2014 employees were versus the 2013. So certainly, it varies a little bit, but overall, frankly, we are, we meet our goals in most areas and we're always seem to be short in those three areas that I identified for both minorities and females. So, it's an ongoing struggle for us and a place that we continually need to establish a goal so that we're working toward meeting that goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Seeing none, thanks Jen. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatement. Diane Ripkema.
Good morning Diane.
Good morning. Diane Ripkema, Director of Equalization. I have an application for an abatement for parcel number 78715. This is for $983.36. This is an owner occupied adjustment.
Any questions?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the abatement for the amount of $983.36. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item seven are notices and requests. The item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for architectural services for pre-design work, development of site master plan, and preparation of preliminary cost estimates for various construction options for the Minnehaha County jail expansion needs.
Are there any questions about this? Otherwise, I would take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the county auditor to publish notice for architectural services. Commissioner Barth.
I would just point out that this talks about options and it's not committing us to any particular course of action as far as, you know, building a giant jail or what other option there might be. We're going to look at the options and with this RFP, hopefully, people who know more than we will bring some items forward.
I have a motion and a second to authorize. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you Cindy. This is on DPNO number 37170 on the amount of $3,386.8. The auditor's office received a request for a compromise of a lien. This primarily deals with a real estate transaction. It has to do with three different lots up in Lyons, South Dakota. The applicant originally was attempting to go ahead and actually take care of this particular lien due to the fact that it was incurred by his ex-wife. The lien was identified as an encumbrance on the property during title work when there was preparation done to sell the property. The lien incurred primarily two charges incurred by his ex-wife in the years 1997, 1998 for medical expenses. Of course, they were married in 2009 and divorced in 2011. So these liens were basically incurred more than 10 years prior to their marriage. However, after you get married, they, all the debts that she had actually attached to his property. And so, in the process of going through the divorce, she quit claimed whatever interest she had in the property back over to him and that was incorporated into a judgment and decree of divorce. And I had a chance to go through that judgment decree of divorce and I believe it was item... If you go down and you look at the stipulation which was incorporated into the divorce decree, you'll see that I believe it's...I'm getting there. Oh, here it is. Debts. Item G. Wife shall be responsible for payment of the following debts and shall indemnify and hold husband harmless from, and she wrote down none, and any undisclosed debt that she has incurred, that would be the liens with the county, in her name or against any property awarded to her. And both of them agree that they shall indemnify and hold each other harmless. So, what I would do is I'll make a motion to go ahead and have the lien released as it relates to the applicant but have the lien remain against her to allow for the property transaction to go ahead and take place. Ultimately, she will be responsible for this debt. Unfortunately, we could try to make a case to go ahead and get some sort of remuneration from it. However, with the fact that there was a quitclaim deed, giving it back, I think that our state's attorney would be tilting at windmills to try to get it. But I'll leave it up to his assessment to go ahead and try to explain how we could get 3,300 bucks out of this. That's my motion. I don't know if I'll get a second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the lien from the property and put the total amount of the judgment against the ex-wife. Are there any comments?
No other questions.
Question?
There must have been a previous lien on her before they got married.
Yes.
Correct.
And it just automatically goes over then to the houseman.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we did. Down here.
Well, I'll just go on. Gordy Swanson always said, you know, there is what he called the thread or the indicia of a property interest there. The unfortunate part is that in this particular instance, it's a pretty thin thread and it'd be difficult. But I'll leave it up to Kirsten if you want to still point on that a little bit.
I can if you wish. It doesn't matter either way. I would just say that there is some law saying that a divorce settlement can't impair a county lien like this. However, if we were to go after this, I'm guessing that he would just drag her into this and all three of the parties would be in on determining who needs to pay this. So, you certainly can abate it as a matter of fairness, for lack of a better way of doing it. But there is some enforceability there, but again, the thread analogy is probably a good one.
Commissioner Kelly.
Is the lien still on her?
Yes.
Correct.
And if the applicant is here, this would be an opportunity for them to come forward. And they're not here. So, I do have a motion and a second to leave the lien on the ex-wife, which was hers in the first place, and remove it from the home. Any other comments? Take a motion or take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. At this point, I am going to turn the chairmanship over to Commissioner Pecus because I am leaving shortly. Just a second. I'll sign these.
But not permanently.
But not permanently. Just for the day.
Thanks, Robert. Yeah. And now we're going to turn to an opportunity for public comment and I guess there's an opportunity for public comment. Please proceed. Commissioner Cole.
Good morning Commissioners and temporary chair. Now, with history lesson that I'm going to try to impart on you this morning is something that I think is fairly important. I know that Commissioner Barth now has a deeper sense of history now of the passing of his mother and that we do have one thing in common because of my grandmother's birth certificate was yellow Madison County. So she was born 40 years earlier in the dugout along the Minnesota River. We look at those things and we suddenly say that we have some common tie. Local history, county history has taken a big hit this last month. Sandra Almond passed away. She was very, very involved with extension. Dr. Carl Wagner, very much involved with the medical field and just a great person. And Sunday, Dr. Thomas Killian passed away and he was very involved, more recently in history, but he was very involved with the Kneipp administration when Mr. Kneipp was Governor of South Dakota. But that's our local feeling and I have the privilege and honor of knowing those three people and having worked with them. The most recent thing that we have that deals with history is we're all kind of concerned with what's going on in Crimea and in the Ukraine. When the United States was going through its revolutionary period in the 1770s, Catherine the Great was in charge in Russia, but most people don't know that she was Prussian. And she wanted to get the Ukraine farmed, so she asked the Germans from Germany to come over and farm the Ukraine for the Russians because they needed the production. She made some concessions to them that they would not have to serve in the military and they would not have to pay Russian taxes. A hundred years later, things changed in the 1870s and that's when the Germans who were then living in Russia came over to the United States and they settled the area from Kansas all the way up to Manitoba. That's where our Germans from Russia have come from. So we have a vested interest, though we don't think of it that way, in the Ukraine. In the 1940s, late 1930s, the Russians did the same thing to Crimea and Ukraine that we did to the Japanese. The Russians sent the Germans to Siberia and kicked out the Tartars who were Crimean and had been there for since the 1500s and were 80% of the population. And now Putin is back trying to say he's protecting Russian interests. That's world history. I think that something that you should be aware of that has happened this last week, this book has come off the press. It's a good history. It's good short history of Minnehaha County and the markers that are here. And though a lot of people, I think Henry Ford said, "History is bunk," but history was yesterday and all the days preceding it and we all have some history in it. Commissioner Barth's mother's page in history is now written as well as the other three people that I mentioned. But this is a good concise history that you can avail yourself of. I think it's something that if you don't...now, history won't predict the future, but it helps each one of us understand the present. So, I would suggest, and this, as I said, is hot off the press, that you can avail yourself of this particular tome because it covers all of the historic markers in Minnehaha County. And there are some very interesting things that we have here that I think the general population's not aware of. And I, Commissioner Kelly would like it because there's lots of pictures.
Where can you get it Bob?
The Juan Robinson and the Historical Society, they premiered it at the Dakota History Conference on Saturday. I don't know exactly where you get it. It's not cheap. I think it's around 40 bucks. But there are a lot, I mean, every, you know, to give you an idea, it's a, you can look at this and probably use it as a quick read and get some idea of what's going on in your various parts of the county. And it covers the entire county as well as the city of Sioux Falls.
Thanks Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now let's turn to regular business. Who want to read item number 10 first Cindy?
Item 10 is consider an application to consume and blend alcohol beverages on May 20th, 2014 at the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum, 1900 Perry Place, Sioux Falls. It's a fundraiser party. The application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, and Planning and Zoning Department. And they reported no objections or concerns with the issuance of the license. And Lori Queso is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks.
Come on. Come forward please Lori.
Certainly.
Can you please state your name and address please, just for the record?
Yes. My name is Lori Queso. I'm the Director of the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. My mailing address is 300 North Sharapa, Suite 601, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57103.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Queso this morning?
I would move for approval. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second for approval without any further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Lori.
You bet. Go ahead Cindy.
Item 11 is a briefing and update on the current activities of the Lincoln and Minnehaha County Economic Development Association. Nick Fosheim.
Morning Nick. Could you just state your name and address for the record please?
Sure. Good morning Commissioners. Nick Fosheim, Minnehaha County Economic Development Association. I'm located at 200 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 101.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to stop by this morning. I just wanted to provide you with a brief update on what we've been up to, what we're seeing, and I think where we're headed. So, just like the history lesson we got, I want to start with a little bit of history, some perspective on where we've been. When you look at our partnership with Lakita over the years through 2013, we've seen a total of 51 projects resulting in 2,600 jobs, 2 million square feet of building space, and over $244 million invested in real estate and equipment by companies in our two counties. I think that's a pretty impressive number to start. And I think it sets the tone for a theme that I think I would highlight today, which is confidence and optimism, which are two things I think we're seeing in Minnehaha County related to economic development. So, 2014 is off to a strong start. Our pipeline seems full, but we always have room for more and it just pushes us to work harder. But to put some numbers to it, so far this calendar year, we've seen about $5 million invested by companies resulting in 130 new jobs. A majority of that is coming from the new Carl v Carlson plant, which is south of Highway 38 at exit 390, which is the east Hartford exit. So we'd be seeing some things take shape there. Also, Troy's Wood Specialties up at the I-29 Development Park by Dell Rapids. He's adding some equipment, so that's good. He's bringing more of the process in-house. So, a couple of examples of those investments that have resulted in some new job creation. Well, and then also the news about Rosenbauer, that's going to, that number isn't reflected in these totals. So we're going to see continued growth, I think, throughout the year. But if you read our latest newsletter, one of the components to economic development is infrastructure development. And several of our communities have experienced some planning and they are going forward with some major projects this year. So Dell Rapids, Brandon, and Hartford are all in the middle of some major infrastructure projects that will result in some incredible development in economic development. Brandon specifically, they're putting a road in this spring that will open up some other area for development and also serve some of Marmon Energy's increased capacity needs over there as well. So, and then Hartford, that's an exciting project because this new street is opening up 26 acres for new development right along the interstate. So, some important work that's taking place out there. One of the indicators that we track every year is taxable sales. Happy to report that in the first five months of our fiscal year, taxable sales are up 14% in Minnehaha County communities, which is pretty significant. The largest percent increase came from Valley Springs. They doubled their taxable sales over last year, same period last year. The largest dollar increase came from Brandon, which was $8.4 million or 20% over the same period last year. And I got curious, so I wanted to see what were taxable sales before the recession hit. So I went back to 2007. By the way, we're $40 million ahead this year than where we were before the recession for the same period. So I think that shows a trend of continued growth and we'd like to see that. So we'll continue tracking that and bringing that back to you. Retention and expansion is an initiative that we're working on for 2014. So we are on average visiting three companies a month and that's important because it's an incredibly competitive environment out there, especially for labor. So we want to continue to check in with our companies who have invested in us already. And so we'll continue doing that. A couple of marketing things, wanted to bring those to your attention. Kind of breaking news because last week, we selected our first ever intern for our office. And so they're going to be working on helping us update our marketing materials, which I brought with you, with me today. That's the new look for our materials. And so, over the summer, with the help of our intern, we'll be creating some templates that turn this brochure into a more user-friendly document that we can customize based on the audiences that we will be communicating with. So, wanted to give you the first look at the new stuff. And then finally, I want to touch on quickly the workforce summits that the Governor's Office is hosting. The first one's actually today in Mitchell and we'll be hosting one in Sioux Falls on June 17th. And there's a couple of them that have some specific focuses. The one in Mitchell today is focused on kind of technical education. There's one in Brookings that will be focused more on engineering. And so, we're still putting together the agenda for the Sioux Falls Summit, but we are the last one in the series. I would encourage you to register early as they are capping attendance and so encourage you to do that. Look forward to that. But that's all I've got today. Thank you again for your partnership in economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Fosheim. Are there any questions for Nick? Commissioner Barth?
Nick, last night, we approved the Bulk Oil Facility...
Nick, last night, we approved the bulk oil facility over south of Hartford in that subdivision. You know, that's really a great spot for development to occur, but because of the infrastructure of that subdivision, it's difficult to allow for more truck traffic, et cetera. Is there anything that we can do for that subdivision, you know, both as a county, as a city? I mean, we are apparently getting $40 million to move some railroad tracks. What can we do to fix the roads in that subdivision just south of Hartford?
Well, we'll continue to track that situation over there. There are some pending litigation that involves those roads over there and the maintenance of those, so we're waiting for some clarification as to how to move forward. And so I did make some calls on that last week, and I'll continue to keep you updated as to that progress over there.
Seems to me that if they could just bring that road up to stuff, that they could turn it over to the city or to the city of Hartford, that is, or to the township to continue the maintenance. And I guess one other point I would make is it's nice to have taxable sales up, however, Minnehaha County gets nothing from that.
Any other questions for Mr. Fosheim? All right, thank you very much, Nick. All right, that was item number eleven. Do you want to read item number twelve for us, please?
Sure. Item twelve is consider a motion to approve the professional services agreement between Minnehaha County and HDR Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $26,534.60 for construction administration of rehabilitation project on structure 50-300-118. D.J. Boothby.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. We led a project a little while ago for the low slump overlay of this structure. It is just south and west of Garrettson, and the construction contract is with PCI Roads for about $221,000. And we've successfully negotiated this contract with HDR Engineering as a follow-up to their design contract. The contract is $26,534, and I can answer any questions you have about the contract.
Any questions for Mr. Boothby this morning?
I'd move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item thirteen is consider a motion to approve the purchase of concrete pipe culverts for the Highway Department from Hancock Concrete Products Incorporated, competitively bid by Lincoln County. D.J. Boothby.
Commissioners, in an effort to both satisfy the requirements of our new purchasing policy revisions that were completed last year, and just to streamline our purchasing procedures in our department, we're requesting permission to purchase off of a contract that Lincoln County authorized recently for concrete pipe. We don't buy greater than $25,000 worth of concrete pipe typically in a year, but this will prevent us from having to go out to get quotes every time we purchase a pipe. If I can answer any questions that you might have about this one, too.
Are there any questions for Mr. Boothby?
Move to authorize this purchase.
We have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for concrete pipe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, D.J.
Item fourteen, consider a motion to amend inmate telephone services agreement between Minnehaha County and Inmate Calling Solutions, LLC, doing businesses IC Solutions. Jeff Gromer.
Morning, Warden. Good morning. Jeff Gromer, Warden at the jail. I'm just here to present an amendment to the contract with IC Solutions, who is our telephone service provider. Earlier in the year, or late last year, the effective date was February 11th of 2014. The FCC put maximum mandate, mandated a maximum per-minute calling charge for inmates housing correctional facilities, which requires us to make a slight adjustment to our calling rates. All of our rates were 25 cents a minute. The FCC mandate places local calls at 21 cents a minute and interstate calls at 21 cents a minute, so we're required to drop those two categories four cents. There's also an intrastate interlata and an intrastate interlata, which has to drop down to that 21 cents as well. The amendment has no effect whatsoever on our guaranteed minimum commission rate that's included in the original contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Warden Gromer? Go ahead.
Jeff, we've implemented a new vendor and a new system. Can you tell us how that's working?
It's actually working very well. We have a few hardware issues now and then, but that's kind of any system that comes in place on this. The phone system there is errors come up, problems come up there. We're responsive in fixing it. The video visitation system is working very well, so.
Excellent.
The process is smooth.
Yeah, and I actually got it set up. Jeff's office helped me get it set up to do that, and I've tested it out, and it works just great once you get it set up. Any other questions for Mr. Gromer? All right, well, then the Chair will entertain a motion to amend the contract.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
If we lose any more people, we're not going to...
Item fifteen is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Seeing none, we'll move to new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, oh, yeah, did you have a report?
I would like to give a quick report.
Oh, go ahead.
Liaison-type activities. And first of all, our planning and zoning didn't last night, and we did approve that bulk oil thing south of Hartford. Despite my personal concerns about the conditions of the road and stuff there, that area really could be a gem in our community as far as, in our county, for economic development. And currently, it's a mess and has been a mess for many years. In addition, we did have a joint meeting of the, with the city a week ago, and that part of, that planning part of that also was a bit of a disaster, where we had just the three of us Commissioners there, and we had, we voted one way, and then the city voted the other way, and then we revisited and voted another way. And at one point, I actually had to second a motion by Commissioner Kelly on the behest of our chairperson being, as she was chairing the meeting, couldn't second it. And we really need to make sure we have more than three of us there, and maybe just postpone it if we can't make that happen. Anyway, that's my report on liaison stuff.
Correct, yeah. Any other comments or questions? You know, and I did intend to be at that meeting last Tuesday, but as you know, my wife was out of town for a week, and I couldn't find a babysitter. So I have parental obligations as well, so that was unfortunate. But I can also say that in my experience on the Commission, I'd have to say in the last couple of years, for some reason, our joint planning meetings, which used to go so swimmingly, have become very, very contentious. And for some reason, it seems that the city and the county don't seem to be eye to eye on a lot of issues. So it's interesting because that didn't used to take place historically. I don't recall that ever being a big issue, at least until recently. Commissioner Kelly?
It wasn't really contentious, but one of the interesting issues was that it was all over about, at least from what I sensed, it was over 128 square feet on a, how big a building? Can't remember.
It was, we approved a 1600, and they wanted 1728.
Yeah. The procedure of the Roberts rules worked it out with no problem, but nobody seemed to know exactly what to do. And I guess I should have known just from the reconsideration from the legislative days, but, and that's what we ended up doing. But thank goodness Jim David was there and could, you know, there wasn't much representation from anybody that had any parliamentary experience. And that's unfortunate, too. I don't think the vote would have changed, maybe not, but I'm not even sure what would have finally approved. I think it was the 1628. Our staff was hung up on the 1600. For some reason or other, the Planning Commission approved 1628, and the city was at 1728, and it was really all a foolish debate over a small thing, but there's a couple of members there, particularly one, that kind of gets hung up on libertarian views, and so a lot of things got thrown into that mix that really didn't belong there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, question.
I think Kermit was willing to allow 30,000 square feet, but interestingly, the mayor wasn't there, and there was one city councilman not there, and they voted four to three both times. So if we'd had one more city councilman there, it might have been four to four, and nothing would have happened either way. So it's a tight meeting.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, good comments. So is there any other new business to come before the Commission?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Robert? Oh, go ahead. Just going to throw this up, I hope. Recently, you know, there's been some discussion in the media about how our population increase has led to an increase in crime. And, you know, you could take the 2012 statistics and take them to 2013, and it looks incremental. But if you take a look at the difference between 2011 and 2012, here we have rape in 2011 at 116, and 2012, 153. Aggravated assault went from 174 to 263. Okay, so then the next year, you know, aggravated assault slightly declined, but what a huge increase we had in 2012. And, you know, it's interesting to me that while we may be, you know, number one and people being jolly and all this kind of stuff, you know, our city sometimes fails to mention that we have the seventh fastest growing crime rate in the United States, although every other stat that favors us is brought up. So you take a look right down the list there, larceny, fraud, narcotics cases, cocaine seizures. Robert, can you slide that up to show the cocaine? I mean, that's an incredible increase in the amount of drugs that are entering our community. And talking to the sheriff, you know, these are not even the issues. The issue, besides meth, is actually pharmaceutical drugs, which are causing more and more problem. And, you know, I have to wonder, I can remember my dad asking the question of a pharmaceutical lobbyist in Washington, DC. How come your company exports to Mexico six times the amount of barbiturates that Mexico consumes? How come you do that? How come our pharmaceutical companies are flooding this country with many times the amount that is legally being consumed? We are paying the penalty for that, and they are winking at the fact that it's being illegally manipulated and causing all kinds of troubles through our community. In other areas where pharmaceutical drugs have become too expensive, people have turned to heroin, and again, people are dying from heroin overdoses. Things are not doing that well, and whether it's mental health, spiritual health, law enforcement, I don't know what, but we have a problem here. And I just wanted to bring these numbers forward to dispute the fact that others may say that there's no problem.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Just to comment on Jeff's figures there, you know, we've got, we've got an issue. I know they say that this is probably not untypical of a lot of communities around the country, but I don't think that we have to accept it. I think, you know, the sheriff, the jail is concerned with incarcerating the people. I mean, they, police arrest them, we incarcerate them, and we prosecute them. The police are doing, you know, just exactly what they're supposed to do, and that's arrest the people. Nobody's really looking at the underlying causes, and if there's, if there's something there that this community can do community-wide, and I've tried to been pushing this, but I'm not a good one to carry things to step two, and that's kind of where we're at right now, is that I believe somehow we ought to have a summit of the officials that are involved in this thing. And that's sheriff, the public defender, the public advocate, the state attorney, the police chief, sheriff. Somehow, I think we need to sit down and say, what's going on? And is there something that we can do to change this? I remember when the Commission, before I was on the Commission, did the diversity deal. What was the campaign called? The bumper stickers were...
Well, there were several, but are you thinking of a racism?
Yeah, yeah, the racism deal. And I think that was fairly successful, and it was just raising awareness. We just went through a mayor's election, and nobody really, you know, the, nobody wants to raise the ugly specter that crime is there, but I still believe that somebody needs to take the ball in this, and it can't necessarily be one of the Commissioners or Councilmembers to look at what's happening out there. And there's a lot of parties, and the statistics, and you guys have seen them now, is that, you know, our jails are the biggest mental health clinic, or mental health institutions in the world, in the country. That there's, I thought it was something like 10 times more people in jail with mental health issues than there are people in mental health institutions, of which there aren't very many in this country anymore because of costs. Not that we want to put people in the mental health institutions to jail because they're like about $400 a day, but the fact remains that this is, this is an underlying issue, and I think it goes into the drug, drug deal, too. I just, I don't know, I'm going to continue beating the drum for some sort of summit meeting, but that, these aren't the first numbers to concern us. And I think we're all aware that there's underlying, there's something happening out there that really isn't the way this community wants to operate.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, then, is there any old business to come before the Commission? Go ahead, Robert.
Commissioners, I do have one item of new business that I wanted to bring forward to you at the, at the request of Commissioner Hyburger. And last, last week, you probably received an email from, that was forwarded by our State Association, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, from NACO regarding a new rulemaking process or a definition that the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers are engaged in right now to redefine water, waters under the U.S. Clean Air, Clean Water Act. And the concern from the NACO at the, at the national level is that potentially, as these are in draft form, could include streams, tributaries, ditches that currently are within the jurisdiction of county planning and zoning.
Ditches.
And the, the request was just to provide feedback on the effect that these proposed definitions would have. And Commissioner Hyburger asked me to do a little more checking and in conversations with Bob Wilcox at the state level, and also Brookings County Commissioner Don Larson, who has been one of the state reps to the NACO Board for many, many years and is a fairly senior member on a number of the committees that are, that are most directly working on this issue right now. He didn't have a whole lot of specific answers for me right now. He kind of chuckled and told me that this, this definition is a 370-page working document at this point. And so he said he would check with some folks on the national level and get back, but he was very pleased to hear that there was at least some interest on the part of Minnehaha County of being aware of this issue. And he just asked me to communicate that back to you based on, on the question and the inquiry that I received from Commissioner Hyburger.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I appreciate that, Robert, and I hope that you'll stay on top of it, and if we do need to write to our elected representatives on that issue, I think we should be prepared.
Three hundred and seventy pages to define water? I think Bill Janklow said it best when he said, obviously, in most parts of the country, water's for drinking and whiskey's for fighting, but Bill Janklow said, in South Dakota, you know, it's whiskey is for drinking and water's for fighting. So go ahead.
I agree with Cindy, but I don't think it's an if. I think we should. I would hope that we can make a resolution which we could send to our elected officials and also to the state and perhaps the EPA. It isn't going to be long before that pond that I have in my backyard is going to be It isn't going to be long before that pond that I have in my backyard is going to be regulated by EPA.
That's my pond.
No, you got the birds or whatever. But I think, this is a much more serious issue than I think we, we've really given it lately. And it's just another regulatory body with unelected, faceless officials writing rules for the rest of the country. And I, I would encourage, and if there's anybody else, you know, I'm sure Cindy would also, that we pass a resolution, and we draw up a resolution and get it approved by the commission and pass.
One, one comment I would, I would make is that in my conversation with Commissioner Larson yesterday, that, one of my first questions was, what, what could our commission do to be most effective in communicating a message? And at this point, he said, give us some time. You know, let, let us work with our, with our representative, with our lobbyists and the folks that we're working with on a procedural level. So let us, let us get, get our game plan, because the, he said, with the comment period remaining open until the middle of July, he said, this is, this probably, at this current time, is not on the radar of elected members at this point. That this, this still has a, so needs to work through the process. But they, he said, we will set up a conference call between our, our point person, the lobbyist with NACO and with our state associations. And they, they indicated that they would get back to me in a very short order of time with a, some suggestions of how we could, if you chose to move forward to that, how you could most effectively communicate a message. And I certainly will pass on those, those comments as soon as I receive them.
Jeff?
On that deck.
You know, with, all of us have issues with regulation. And I know that many people are opposed to the EPA for this or that reason. But at the same time, it's interesting that here in South Dakota, we demand that they keep the regulation requiring renewable fuels to be put into our, ethanol to be created. But they hate everything about the EPA except for the fact that it mandates renewable fuels. And it's, you know, we had the, just the planning meeting the other, other night. Here were, you know, 16 people opposed to their neighbor building a, a building 1,728 feet. They wanted more regulation. And, you know, certainly when they want to build that building, they don't want more regulation. It's a, it's an interesting thing, the idea of trying to regulate some of these deals. Unfortunately, a lot of times, it's because of some kind of abusive use by somebody else that went way over. I was saying to Kermit, you know, if you believe as a libertarian that your property is your own to do whatever you want, how do you feel about, you know, medical waste incineration next door? I mean, we all want regulation at some point, and it's just very difficult to set it. I think 378 pages overdefines any waterway that I have done. Although, when I was a kid, I can remember making dams along the curb and backing the water up. Is that going to fall under federal regulation now?
Good question. Dick?
I kind of respectfully disagree with our commissioner friend in Brookings. I think everybody wants to let the professionals handle this. You know what? I think this is time for the locals to start taking charge. We are the largest county in the state. A letter from us to our elected officials, I think, would have an effect. And I don't care if the deal's open till July 15th, and I certainly don't want them coming in on July 12th and saying, we have to have this done today and just pass what we just told you. That happened, the only time I, you know, I, government moves slower and heck, and then all of a sudden, you got to do everything in five seconds. And I just, I would continue to encourage us to do a, to do a resolution and we send to the elected officials.
Go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Kelly, and, you know, perhaps we should prepare a letter right now to express our grave concern about any regulation that is so complex as to have 379 pages. And we could look at it next week and, and send it out, you know, next week, assuming it fits the criteria we want.
I, I don't have any problem with that. In fact, my experience, I've been following this administration's attempts at negotiated rulemaking with the bodies that are out there that have vested interests. And the problem is that in the history of this administration currently in office, the negotiated rulemaking has wholeheartedly failed, and they've resulted in just mandating regulations and slammed them into production. A letter like this is an attempt on our part at negotiated rulemaking. I have every belief that a letter from us will actually affect our legislators, and they will take it into consideration, whether or not this has any effect on what the administration is planning. In my experience, just seeing what they've done in the areas of education, they've just set aside negotiated rulemaking and imposed their own regulations. So it's always good to be a part of the process. And I think, at least at this table, we are arbiters in the art of compromise, aren't we? And so I do think that compromise is the best way to effectuate government. So I think we should put a letter together. I'd be happy, I mean, Cindy's chairwoman, I think we should wait till she gets back, and maybe all of us can sign it, or she can sign it for all of us, whatever we want to do. But obviously, I think it's in our best interest to craft something. Do you have any comments on this, Gerald?
Well, I think the whole initiative that was started in the conversation was started by Chairperson Hyburger, and I believe that the two of you can work together to put together a rough draft, and we'll look at it down the road.
We will prepare a draft for your, for your review. And I would also just leave you with one last comment. In my conversation with Commissioner from Brookings County, he said, you know, if your, if your commission feels strongly about this, we may lean on you at some point to, to be part of, of public meetings or to, to submit more direct testimony. So we will, we will certainly prepare a letter for your review and, and move forward from there.
You know, if you think it's affecting us that bad, think about what they're going to deal with in Minnesota, the land of 10,000 lakes. Everything's going to have a name, and everything's going to be regulated. So I think everybody has an interesting view of how this could affect them.
Even Minnesota might be concerned.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Probably less so in Nevada, but, you know, I don't know. Anyway, thank you, Robert. So that's old business. And I do believe we do have some items for executive session on contract negotiations. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive session for contract negotiations?
That's my motion.
Thank you, there's a motion. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.